Good evening, everyone. It's 7:00 PM according to my fancy smartwatch. And yes, we're gonna be quiet now. I'm calling to order the city regular city council meeting of Tuesday, October 24th. City Clerk?
Councilmember Daley?
Here.
Councilmember Flagler?
Here.
Councilmember Liang?
Here.
Vice Mayor Weinberg?
Here.
Mayor Meadows?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, so tonight, we have a treat. The Girl Scouts are going to do a flag ceremony and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I will turn it to you, young ladies. I think we'll go ahead and stand.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Color guard attention. Color guard advance. Color guard, please post the colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard dismissed. Audience, you may sit down.
Thank you, young ladies. I'm gonna come up and greet you. All right, very good. Let me get your recognition here. So I'm gonna, if I have the right list of names, I'm going to call the names. I'll give you your badge and you can introduce yourself. So Dia? Thank you for participating tonight. Tell us a little bit about yourself. Name, school, and age.
My name is Dia. I'm nine years old and I go to Oak School.
Nice to meet you. Look at your mom. I tried. Elodie? Thank you for coming this evening. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name is Elodie. I am nine years old and I go to Oak School.
You gotta be quick. Okay. Sarah Do? Hi, Sarah. Thank you for participating tonight. Tell us about yourself.
My name is Sarah. I go to Oak School and I'm nine years old.
Nice to meet you. Aditi? Thank you for coming.
Hi, my name is Aditi. I am nine years old and I go to Oak School.
I'm detecting a theme here. All right, and Stella? Thank you.
My name is Stella. I am 10 years old, basically. Tomorrow's my birthday. And I'm, I go to Loyola School.
Ah, okay. All right. Nice to meet you. Happy almost birthday. Did you want a photo up? So, girls, let's, if you wanna go stand by the flag, we can do that. Okay. So, the next item is report on closed session. I will mention that tonight, we're actually doing our closed session after our meeting. And so, at that point, we will go through the closed session verbiage, but obviously, we have nothing to report out right now. Changes to the order of the agenda. Colleagues, I'd again like to move special items in front of public comments on items not on the agenda. Is everyone good with that? Okay, good. So, I do wanna mention that, as per usual, we are following the Los Altos Municipal Code, Chapter 2.05, Section 2.05.01, Public Meeting Rules for Conduct. And maybe we shouldn't have let the Girl Scouts leave. They would show us how, how to behave very properly. But anyway, so just wanted to mention that. And so, I'm going to go ahead and start our, our special items. So I'm actually going to start with a, another, a statement. I made a statement, actually, at our last meeting on October 10th. That was just days after the terrorist attacks in Israel. Since then, some of our residents have reached out to express that they feel unsafe and not supported in our community. To make it clear, yes, we condemn the Hamas terrorist attacks, and yes, we condemn anti-Semitism. It is impossible not to be sickened and fearful in the face of such horrifying attacks, which killed over 1,400 Israeli citizens, including babies, children, and the elderly, injured thousands, thousands more, and others are still held as hostages. I know that many in our community have friends, family, or colleagues impacted. It is a time of pain, trauma, and grief. I am particularly attuned to the plight of civilians in war. Sorry, it's taking me a moment. My father, as a child, was imprisoned along with my grandparents in an internment camp for over three years, along with thousands of other allied civilians, when Imperial Japan occupied the Philippines during World War II. They survived. Many did not. This is why I personally understand that the hardest impact of terror and war is when civilians are injured, kidnapped, imprisoned, or killed. This is why we are also filled with sorrow, to see the loss of civilian lives in Gaza. To quote Barack Obama from his statement yesterday, "If we care about keeping open the possibility of peace, security, and dignity for future generations of Israeli and Palestinian children, as well as for our own children, then it falls upon all of us to at least make the effort to model, in our own words and actions, the kind of world we want them to inherit." Close quote. "We will call out all forms of hate, including anti-Semitism and Islamophobia, and encourage compassion and understanding to support all our neighbors." So thank you for letting me make that longer statement. I wanted our residents to feel heard. I know our words don't change the situation. It's an, it's an international situation, but we do care. So now, we're going to move on to recognition of outgoing commissioners. So I have a list, and let's see. Taylor, you're going to, yeah. So should I come, I'm gonna come up front there. Okay, I'll meet you down there. Nadim Malouf. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Appreciate it. You want a photo up?
Yeah.
And then, and actually, once we've done everybody individually, then all commissioners and council members.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chepe Manteca. Thank you very much. Oh, yes. Design Review Commission. Mr. Malouf was with Complete Streets. Design Review Commission. Good point. David Blockus, also Design Review Commission. Who I personally served with on DRC.
Many moons ago, yes.
Both of our, many moons ago, yes.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Dave. Sam Harding, Design Review Commission. No kilt tonight?
No.
No scotch? That's later, later. All right. Thank you, Sam. Is Michael Ma here? I don't see him, no. Okay. And Kol Jeet, Kol Kat, I don't see here either. All right. Art Whipple. Financial Commission. Treat this guy carefully.
Okay.
All right. Nelvin G., Library Commission. Thank you so much. Okay. And Lucy Gengigian, I'm probably pronouncing that right. I mean, wrong. It was subliminal. I was trying to convince you. I did it okay. All right, good. And this was the Arts, Public Arts Commission. Okay. Now, I don't know if all commissioners would like to come back up, and council members can come down. You can bring your framed items with you, if you want. And we'll take yet another photo up. Okay. Everybody here, okay. And just thank you so much. Appreciation for all the time and the energy and the work that you've done to support the city. Thank you. Okay, so now we're going to move ahead with public comments not on the agenda. I have a lot of speaker cards, but they mostly seem to be on Item 6. I don't see any. I see one that's on Items Not on the Agenda. And if you're online and intended, intending to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, we're going to give two minutes tonight. So if you intend to speak and you're not Vadim Katz, then you should fill out a speaker card in the chambers. Otherwise, we'll start with Mr. Katz.
Your name, Councilmembers of Calorin?
Wait, wait, wait one minute. Sorry.
Thank you. My name is Vadim Katz. I have 15 years of combined experience with LASD between my two children. My oldest will start high school next year. I'm very concerned with the substance of K-12 education in our districts, judging by the response to the evil committed by the Palestinian military in Gaza against Israeli civilians. Begetry infects young minds the most. This is why the city council must get involved with LASD and MBLA to set expectations on behalf of all city residents that the districts adopt unbiased curriculum and create safe space for kids to obtain knowledge rather than rhetoric. When my daughter was in sixth grade at Springer, her social studies teacher told the kids that Israel is taking Palestinian land during my daughter's presentation about Holocaust. She repeated this accusation in the introduction to Judaism class, thus connecting the Israeli-Palestinian conflict with all of Jewish history, including the extermination of 6 million people without any context. Instead of learning history, the day the sixth graders learned bigotry. Last Friday, one group of Los Altos High School students marched in support of the Palestinian people. They exercised their right to free speech, denouncing Hamas. However, the rest was an uneducated rhetoric against Israel as the oppressor. They did not demand that Hamas elected by the Palestinian people stop calling for, and I quote, "obliteration and dissolution of Israel." They did not demand that Iran stop supplying weapons used to fire 7,000 rockets at civilian targets in Israel. They seem unaware that Israel has stopped, has not occupied Gaza in 18 years, and instead has been providing Gaza with water, electricity, and gas. These kids won't be going on another march, denouncing Islamic Jihad for blowing up a Palestinian hospital, killing many civilians or Hamas fighters, stopping, or Hamas fighters stopping their citizens from leaving in order to use them as human shield. This is too complex for them. It is a lot easier to point a finger at someone they deem more privileged, attach a label such as oppressor in march. While I will protect these kids' rights for free speech, I want them to learn at school that this is a privilege not afforded to Palestinian children by their society. Anti-Semitism is already present in our schools and our communities. I implore you, as city leaders, to take an active role, working together with LASD and MBLA, to hire qualified educators to proactively ensure that teachers are well-educated, to help all children navigate today's world that's full of disinformation and sensationalism. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. So I don't have any other speaker cards for the chamber. So, City Clerk, I'll let you, we have no hands raised for public comment on items not on the agenda, so we're going to close public comment. So, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Let me explain how we do that. We're going to take public comment on any and all items on the consent calendar at this point now. And then council will decide whether anything's being pulled. If it's not being pulled, it can be all approved by one motion. If something gets pulled, you've, if you comment now, you've, this is your one opportunity to comment on all consent items. So, I'm going to ask for, I don't have any speaker cards for anyone in the chambers who want to speak on Items 1 through 5. I'm not seeing anyone dash to get a speaker card, so I'm going to close public comment and see if anyone online wants to speak to the consent calendar. Not seeing any hands. So then, we'll, I'll bring it to my colleagues to discuss or make a motion on the consent calendar. Go ahead, Councilmember Liang.
I would like Agenda Item 5 to be voted on separately, so if we can pull that to be voted on separately.
Okay, so you don't need to discuss it. You just wanna vote separately. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other colleagues have, let me, let me just check before.
Okay.
Yep. Any other colleagues have any items? No, I'm not seeing that. Okay, so City Attorney, you wanted to say, we're just...
Well, what I was going to say is if Councilmember Liang wants to vote...
Well, what I was going to say is if Councilmember Liying wants to vote, um, no on one item, she can vote on all of them and have the record reflect that she, she votes no on Number 5, or you can do it the long way. Take all five and then do one, or so...
Yeah, we'll just do...
We can keep it all together and then...
Yeah, and the record will reflect that you're voting no on Number 5.
Okay, thank you.
All right, that sounds like the easiest way. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Uh, I move that we approve the consent calendar, Items 1 through 5.
Second.
All right, City Clerk.
Councilmember Daley?
Yes.
Councilmember Flagler?
Yes.
Councilmember Liang?
Um, I'd like to vote yes on 1 through 4, but 5 to reflect the no vote. Thank you.
Very good. Vice Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Mayor Meadows?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously for Items 1 through 4, and then 4 to 1 on Item 5 on the consent calendar.
All right, thank you very much. So with that, we are going to move on to our discussion item, Item Number 6. Um, I'm just gonna point out to my colleagues before we open this up to staff to orient us, um, this is probably gonna feel a lot like a study session, it's a discussion item, but we're, but staff is really looking for direction, so it's kind of, um, so keep that in mind, we don't have answers, we're just supposed to come up with questions. So with that, who will be presenting the report?
I will, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
So, good evening, City Council, Director Zorn's here to discuss a potential dark skies ordinance here in the city of Los Altos. To give a brief overview, we will cover, are you guys seeing the shared screen, or no? Oh, sorry. Yep, it did. Yep. All right, uh, so to go over just a brief overview of just the quick presentation to be able to orient ourselves, um, as well as kind of inform some of the conversation, uh, I'll provide a brief background and overview, overarching principles, existing regulations, and the regulatory framework that a dark skies ordinance operates in. So what is a dark sky ordinance? Uh, this is a regulatory tool, uh, which restricts or limits outdoor lighting as defined by local ordinance. Um, this is commonly referred to as a few different things interchangeably, uh, in actual practice, things such as dark skies, light trespass, light pollution, and also the foot candle rule. Uh, this ordinance intent, um, is something to create smart and efficient lighting in warmer tones with shields preventing skyward flow, um, which can help restore the sights that we cannot enjoy from light polluted skies. Uh, the purpose of a dark skies ordinance is what is shown in the main bullet points that are on this slide, uh, to protecting, reclaim the ability to view the night sky and stars, um, it's, uh, improve tranquility within the community, minimize light pollution by protecting against, um, direct glare and excessive lighting, provide standards for efficient, um, and moderate use of outdoor lighting fixtures, um, as well as to promote safe and energy efficient and cost effective outdoor lighting. Some similar regulations that are, uh, in nearby jurisdictions as well as across, um, the state, uh, there's the city of Alameda, Cupertino, Malibu, um, as well as then, uh, the MAC or the Municipal Advisory Council for Ojai area in Ventura, uh, San Diego County has, uh, something similar, although the operative, um, nature of that ordinance, uh, has proven a little bit, uh, inconsistent, uh, Mono County, Kern, and San Bernardino County. Some existing regulations, and I think this is important, at least to just frame and, um, educate the conversation, um, is the CEC was formed, um, under the Warren Alquist State Energy Resources and Conservation Development Act. This authorized the creation of the CEC, and specifically, um, this created efficiency standards for energy production and consumption. So with that being said, is that, uh, the big principle is, is that you can have whatever type of fixtures you want, however bright they are, under the, um, energy regulations in the state. So you can have bigger, you can have brighter, as long as it's energy efficient, so as long as it actually has a smart source essentially of energy or, um, consumption or use of the energy. So it doesn't actually restrict or limit the amount that you actually are producing, um, as an actual, um, fixture. Um, some recent legislation that is somewhat, uh, related and important to note is that AB 2382, um, which was vetoed, um, last year in September, this is because it lacked fiscal analysis. This was going to be a state level, um, blanket, um, implementation for new and retrofits for anything that would be, um, a public facility producing light, um, to essentially implement some of the, um, features that we would be discussing, uh, this evening. And then, again, this was reintroduced this year, this is gonna end up turning into what the legislature refers to as a two-year bill. Um, this was held under submission, um, in a committee, um, but it is actually the same, um, legislation, uh, which is AB 38. However, this would be for retro, um, for new, um, excuse me, not for, um, a blanket that would, uh, be implemented for new and retrofits, uh, but it does carry the same main overarching principles, uh, that we would see in a local ordinance essentially. So what is light? So there's kind of two main components, uh, that a lot of times people focus on one and then forget the other. A dark sky ordinance does really need to contain two features, which is the lumen, so this is the measurement of the amount of the brightness that the bulb produces, but then the Kelvin, um, as it would suggest, um, is that it actually talks about the hue of the light. So warmer, um, or more towards the yellow end of the spectrum of the lighting fixture, um, is the warmer, which is a lower Kelvin rating versus the blue, which is more of the colder, um, Kelvin rating. The blue, in theory, actually produces more, um, light rebound, um, on immediate and adjacent surfaces, so it ends up being somewhat of something that kind of impacts surrounding areas. Effectively, something that is also another main component of something such as a dark skies ordinance is, um, what we call light trespass. I think this is a really great, um, example that illustrates what light trespass actually is when there is not adequate and proper shielding of light fixtures, um, where if you have something that's just with zero shield, it's gonna illuminate anything that the light can rebound and touch. Direct and shielded downward, which is actually the main principle of, um, helping prevent light trespass, is something that actually ends up benefiting, uh, private property. So typical light trespass is, um, just some examples that I wanted to provide, um, as the most common, um, what is considered a foot candle, so essentially, something that I'm gonna cover in the next slide, is the amount of light pour or, um, trespass essentially that is allowed. Obviously, there usually are some types of exemptions that are built in ordinance, uh, such as street illumination, building addresses, permitted signs, temporary and seasonal lighting, obviously something as like a Christmas light installation, and then obviously anything that is, um, directly correlated to an emergency operation or first responding facilities. This is a good, um, graphic representation of what a foot candle is, so one lumen, um, or one candle, um, of light, um, that then ends up scoring, uh, framing in one square foot of the area, so that one lumen equals one square foot or one foot candle. So main principles, um, the main principles of dark skies is as follows, is light only what you need, shield, light fixture downward, automatic timer and motion sensors, warm light, uh, generally that is a maximum of 3,000 Kelvin, light trespass allowance, light curfew, and then standard exemptions, uh, for things such as security walkways, et cetera. Uh, so tonight, uh, obviously after City Council accepts public testimony and any potential questions for staff, is to provide, um, direction, one, if this, uh, City Council would like to proceed with moving forward with, uh, um, a dark skies ordinance, but if so, what are the two main components that, um, staff needs to, um, uh, accept tonight, which is one, the main principles that I've somewhat covered, which ones, uh, the council is interested in actually including into the draft ordinance, and then, um, fundamentally, the applicability of the ordinance, is that something that, um, is obviously subject specific to local regulations? And with that, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, so I will look to my colleagues and see if anyone has any questions for Director Zorn's before we go to public comment. Uh, go ahead, Councilmember Liang.
Thank you, Director Zorn's, greatly appreciate, appreciate you bringing this forward. I believe this is such an important ordinance. The report mentioned that the lights could be bigger and brighter, so by implementing this ordinance, or if we move forward on this ordinance, this will be able to help prevent that from happening, correct?
That's correct, that would be, um, a regulation somewhat tied to the fixtures that are actually allowed onsite.
Okay. My concern is when we pass an ordinance, we hope to, how this is going to, um, be implemented citywide overall. My concern is, how do we get other agencies to comply? Because we have, um, school districts as well as county roads, right? And because by adopting our, um, regulation, will school districts and the county then be, um, able to comply with the Kelvin setting that we adopt, or limit lighting, then they would be able to turn off lighting when unused and based on motion detectors? So any clarification would be appreciated.
So, anything that's associated with a school district, we would not have any purview or ability to enforce anything. We don't look at, um, permits, uh, for school districts, that's something that the state, um, has the authority over and purview. Um, we can always try to somewhat influence and ask for them to do things, um, you know, obviously if it's a directly, um, if it's a light that's recently been installed, you know, I've worked with superintendents before in other school districts to make sure that it's shielded, so it's not impacting a direct neighbor. Actually changing the fixture, though, that's usually not something that they're interested because they know they don't have to. When it comes to the county, I think that there would be a, a bigger, um, undertaking for, uh, council members with, um, you know, certain kind of, uh, regional subgroups that, um, could actually take this up with the Board of Supervisors, um, and, you know, other adjacent, uh, communities in order to be able to help somewhat spearhead maybe a regional, um, collective on this, uh, 'cause I will say, and it, and it does make sense, especially for a city of our size, um, with the land area, can I request that the, um, that the public remain silent so the council can be insured to hear? Um, and so with that is that we are only, you know, just over six square miles, and that we are gonna have a very limited impact because we are surrounded by other jurisdictions, um, immediately that do not have, um, a robust, uh, dark sky ordinance, um, so we're gonna have essentially, by virtue of neighboring jurisdictions, their own light trespass into the city because of, it's a, it's an ambient light pour into the immediate area, so, um, it really should be something that we do look at, um, from a fundamental level of what can we do at a regional, um, you know, to actually have a impact, um, to be able to truly see the night sky again.
San Bruno just recently, um, did outreach for their, their dark skies ordinance, are you aware of their efforts to do outreach and the surveys they provided?
Yeah, so I, I did look at that, but in regards to the ones that had been implemented, that's what obviously staff were, um, recently focusing on in order to be able to put together something, um, for the council to see tonight. We would obviously look at anything after this evening for further best practices.
And, and, and intend to do outreach as well, outreach and education.
Yeah, so, so outreach would definitely need to be a part of the component, this is just to be able to consider the main direction, um, as the, the main principles that were factored into the report and presentation this evening are overwhelmingly things that are somewhat seen in all dark sky ordinances that were reviewed.
Okay, and then some of the cities here, um, I'm concerned because they're bigger cities, and, um, they, our goal is to not create excess than what we already have. And I think our, um, our city is much more different than some of the cities identified with dark skies ordinance. Los Altos is more like, I mean, Los Altos Hills is more like Los Altos. And so I would like to make you aware, and are you aware that Los Altos Hills has a dark skies ordinance? So if not, I would encourage you to also reach out and take a look at that one, 'cause I think we are more compatible with, um, with the lighting that we hope to achieve and maintain to protect, um, our wildlife and, and quality of life of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Flagler?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Zorn's, for the presentation. I wanna make sure that as we move to the discussion portion and action portion of the discussion, that we understand what, if anything, we're able to do, um, as a jurisdiction. And I know in the Q, the Q and A and the questions and answers that were posted this afternoon, there's a lot of questions about code enforcement. Are we able through, or regulations and permitting process to regulate the type of fixtures, the lumens, all these different things through that process for new or retrofitted buildings? Is there a process that would allow us to regulate at that point in time?
Yes, so when we do the, um, the building permit review, um, that's something that we would have, uh, the third-party plan checkers, um, do. As what's mentioned in the staff report, though, is that that would be a specialized permit review, so there would be an additional cost associated to, um, the applicant, uh, so that is something to keep in mind as a fiscal impact, not direct fiscal impact to the city, rather than to applicants that are doing permits, um, because that is not a standard portion of essentially Title 24 and the typical CBC regulations that we do. Do the plan check for, so that is something to have a consideration of. So we can look at that for fixture specific, um, as well as potential shielding requirements that are in the code.
Okay. And then separately, um, when I read about code enforcement and potential violators of whatever code we may draft and adopt, um, I assume that this would be on a going-forward basis, because my concern is, we currently do not have a dark skies ordinance, so I imagine many of our residents, um, under the current code, acted in compliance with our current code. And so going forward, how would we distinguish between our residents who had these light fixtures placed prior to the adoption of any ordinance and after, so a code enforcement officer wouldn't be, you know, citing or going to homes when they're really not in violation? So how would we, could you walk us through what that could look like?
So depending on when the building, uh, plan check was submitted into the city, is it really does call out specific, um, types of, uh, fixtures? So, um, even under, you know, prior code cycles, uh, because of the Title 24 compliance, um, so there is pretty specific criteria that's provided. Sometimes it's not model-specific, um, for some of the prior years, I'm just thinking backwards essentially with building plans I've seen myself. Um, so there's gonna be a little bit of kind of research and analysis essentially on, uh, the city's enforcement capabilities, um, and we're gonna have to have some, um, genuine understanding of when the permit was applied for, when something was actually built and finished, um, and kind of try to discern whether or not the fixture actually is, um, maybe the, the make and model that, you know, was intended to be used at that time. So it's not gonna be perfect for anything that's a retrofit. There's also the, the issue with is that, um, you know, to replace a lighting fixture, you don't need a building permit. So there is gonna be that ongoing compliance, um, which is, uh, gonna be somewhat challenging, is that if, you know, a new property owner comes in, they don't do anything to their entire home, and they wanna change out a bunch of exterior light fixtures, they don't come in for a building permit unless they're actually doing some type of electrical rewiring. So that could go from, you know, a new property owner, um, having something with a specific lumen and a certain Kelvin rating, to the next day, no one's gonna notice an electrician just swapping out some fixtures, and the property's gonna be lit up like a Christmas tree, so to speak. So, um, there is gonna be that kind of complexity of, we're not gonna be able to enforce that, 'cause building wouldn't say, you know, hey, you know, just driving by, do you have a permit for that? Well, no, I don't need to, I'm changing... Well, no, I don't need to, I'm changing a fixture. But also, oh, do you have this right lumen rating or the right Kelvin rating? If there's not a permit for, or permit requirement for it, you know, they're pretty much going to say, you know, we don't have to until the nighttime comes and then we're going to have to try and enforce it, which is one of the things that during the council Q and A, I did have to at least, you know, acknowledge is the fact is code enforcement is, is off the clock, they can't work 24 hours. So the enforcement capabilities would require the police department to employ another new FTE of a community services officer because we would not send sworn personnel out for something of this nature. That would be an extreme cost for enforcement capabilities. So that is something for an ongoing fiscal impact or for the council's understanding and acceptances that enforcement capabilities for after-the-fact replacements might not really be a silver bullet.
No, and you underscored the complexity there, I was trying to comprehend. And I do want to add, I think there are some other local jurisdictions that have adopted dark skies ordinance that are more similar to our community to Councilmember Liang's point. And so I would be curious about their experiences actually enforcing their ordinances. You know, in the, to the extent we want to do anything, you know, the issues you're raising are valid issues that I think we need to address and see if there's a way to figure out how to do the things that we want to do without having these conflicting issues occurring with one house versus another, someone switching it out. I mean, I walked through it this afternoon and there's so many things that could happen with one house that doesn't get caught by our code enforcement officer, or it wouldn't be deemed non-compliant under any dark skies ordinance. So thank you so much, Mr. Zornz.
And one thing I do want to just add, I was not aware of the Los Altos Hills having it, but after just doing a quick Google searches, it's an outdoor lighting policy, so they actually have not fully done what we're discussing tonight by ordinance. There seems a little, I'd have to do some deeper digging, but they reference zoning, which we would not be putting this in zoning for the virtue of not wanting to create vested rights for something of this nature because that's going to go even further down the rabbit hole of trying to enforce things that we're trying to push. So this is similar to things like the Berkeley case recently with energy efficiency standards. So there's where we put this, where it lives, how it operates and how it gets enforced, there's going to be some nuances to it. So theirs is a policy, not an ordinance. It's just they review it during zoning portions, but that again, has limited teeth to it.
Just one for, thank you, Mayor. I'm curious, Mr. Zornz, do you have an estimate of what it would cost an applicant to go through the specialized process you described?
It would be an hourly rate for the plan checkers to review, which is approximately $250 an hour.
Okay.
So this could, I mean, depending on if your design professional knows exactly what the expectation and what they're looking for, and when you're looking at things such as light trespass, that actually provide, that's actually a required full schematic plan that actually talks to the foot candles that are actually being produced by the operative fixture on a site and actually then shows reflective-wise how the foot candle is potentially trespassing at the edge of the property line. So it's, it's quite complex. I actually have reviewed plans such as this before and it's, there's, there's a lot involved with it.
So $250 per hour and we're looking at a few hours for each review? Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Flagler. You actually prompted some questions of mine. I appreciate your questions. Director Zornz, if the council were to adopt a DSO before some of the larger already entitled projects break ground, say 330 Distel, 5150 El Camino Real, would, would our dark skies ordinance apply to those projects or would they be exempt since they're already entitled?
They would be exempt.
Thank you. And last question, if a developer of, if a developer proposed multifamily housing, could they ask for a concession or waiver with respect to our dark skies ordinance?
It would be a waiver, yes.
I think, thank you.
Councilmember Daly? No, okay. Prompted a couple of questions. So one of the exceptions was security. So tell me what security looks like in a single-family home? Is that lights around a garage and sidewalk and?
Yes, Mayor. So the, the security that we would be referring to is that there's, there's obviously, you know, perimeter lighting that ends up being nearby, obviously garages and any main entrances into the home, as well as obviously, you know, any additional kind of accessory lighting fixtures that we would say. You know, security can, you know, be a little bit more robust for, you know, some of the, some of the private properties around town. So I think we've seen that with some of the newer development is that they have that intentional to be able to provide additional lighting so that honestly, security systems can pick up, you know, who is nearby or on private property.
Right. So is there some sort of light fixture you would be able to say off the top of your head, wouldn't necessarily qualify as security lighting?
Not off the top of my head, no. Yeah, I mean, that's.
So a lot of outdoor lighting is considered security?
Yeah, I would say, you know, uplights for trees are, are, would not, but, you know, you could very well say is that we have folks with front property line pile asters that are the entry gate feature that they have intentional because they have a, a small Ring camera that are there that are, that's actually not there to let people in, but rather the motion sensor to know when folks are coming to and from the door and then have another Ring camera right at the door. So lots of ringing going on, but, you know, it's, it really is, you know, dependent upon what a private property owner wants to do for their own privacy and safety of their, of their homes.
Okay. And also then, I'm not necessarily going to, Director Zornz, you can add, but in terms of security concerns and what our police department might feel about this, is that sort of along the same lines what we've been talking? Are there more considerations too? The, the Q and A showed us that there were some general concerns and I, I don't know if we should just leave it at how the Q and A described it or if there's some more specifics around?
Myself and the police chief discussed this matter previously in that there, there is the potential concern of increased burglary from transient activity throughout the community when you see a dark-lit or underlit home. It does create the potential avenue for people to come out and play when they shouldn't be on someone's private property essentially. So that is something to be potentially concerned with, where we could see folks doing additional perimeter lighting in order to be able to circumvent that if homes do become of an increased target within the community.
And then my final question is around regional versus city approach. So thinking of potentially analogy, it may not be a good analogy, but let's talk about reach codes. And there we, we've got a, we've got a regional approach with most of the cities in the county and then there's a broader sort of Bay Area, what's that group called, the Bay Area Back Med? Yeah, there, there's, there's various regional efforts where Los Altos uses guidelines, you know, to, to achieve or even to go beyond. If I understood correctly from the staff report, there's really no coalescence around a regional approach with dark skies?
That's correct, not at this time.
Okay. All right, thank you, Director Zornz. Any final questions before we open up to public comment? No, all right. So public comment, I've got a number of speaker cards here. If you're online and you want to talk to this, please do raise your hand. I see a couple of hands going up. Although we have a number, I think we can do, I think we can do three minutes for public And so I'm going to start in chambers and I've got speaker cards. So if you haven't already given me a speaker card, you should fill one out now. We're going to start with Ann Hapinstall. We will be followed by, I think it's Agus, but I could be, oh, Agnes, my friend Agnes. I just can't read your handwriting, I'm so sorry, Agnes. And, and then Lucy, Lucy, you'll be next after Agnes. But Ann, you have the floor first and we're doing three minutes.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Mayor Meadows, and thank you, council members. My name is Ann Hapinstall, I'm a member of, sorry, I'm a resident of Los Altos and a longtime bird watcher and a volunteer with the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. I'm delighted to see that the council is taking up the discussion around dark sky ordinance and I urge you to move forward with the dark sky ordinance. In South Los Altos, we enjoy the ability to see the stars at night. I don't want to lose that. I also hope to prevent the, I also hope for the prevention of light trespass with light shining, more light shining into my home from my neighbors' homes. And most of all, I want to protect the birds. We know that lights at night interfere with bird migration and it disrupts other biological behaviors as well. Lighting also interferes with people's sleep and impacts human health. You probably read the news reports about a thousand birds dying in Chicago in one night from hitting building in the, in the migration time. I would like council to move forward on a dark sky initiative and to apply the ordinance to private property, office and, and commercial buildings and government buildings. I want the council to also add requirements for bird safe design for new and remodeled buildings. Thank you and I urge you to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Hapinstall. Agnes.
Sorry about my wrong.
Yeah. Lucy and then Dashiel Leeds will follow, Lucy.
I'm going to cede my time to Dashiel Leeds.
Uh, so Dashiel, so then we, three minutes, so you get a maximum of five minutes when you cede time, so, okay, so that's fine. So Agnes has ceded her time. And so Lucy, you are next.
I'm a biology major and started birding when our professor took us out and our exam was bird number one and we had to know who that was, bird number two and so on. And that, I got the bug and I have been birding since the 1950s. I've gone to Antarctica and saw six, six species of penguins. We only didn't see the, the big one, not the king, who's above the king. Yeah, yeah. So he was in the center and we couldn't see him. I love birds, I go with nature tours, Victor Emanuel, and I love birds and I know that they need help. They need our help because there's many, many things working against them. One is global warming, which we can do, but not as much as we should or could, but that is very much working against the birds because when they go to where they're used to go, the food is finished, especially the hummingbirds, the nectar is dried. And it's pathetic to see these gorgeous creatures that give us so much pleasure dying away. We have lost billions of birds since the 1970s. Had I known I was going to speak, I could have come with figures, but this is impromptu because they just asked me and I'm very much for the birds. You know, they give me much joy, but we know that they are facing a lot of problems. The trash, the plastic that we throw, they eat, they think they're full, they die of starvation. The cans that are, the plastic round things that tie together, seven-up cans, Coke cans and things, they're thrown into the sea, the birds eat it, they think it, they can't open their beaks because it gets stuck between the circle. So there's so many things we can do, but right now, we're talking about the dark skies and that's very important. And I do hope our beautiful town here, that I've been living in for the past 10 years and have adopted and love, and I have a small balcony and I have three kinds of seeds for the birds and I have suet. They used to love the Nigel seed, they ate 13 inches every day in a sock and now they have discovered suet. They eat a, a package of suet every week and they love it and we can all help their survival and make life easy for them. We have to be, to be their caregivers, we have to be the ones who have to fight for them. They have no say, poor babies.
Thank you, Ms. Jinjigian, uh, Lucy, thank you. All right, Dashiel Leeds has five minutes.
Hello, Mayor Meadows and Los Alto City Councilmembers. Thanks for your opportunity to speak. My name is Dashiel Leeds, I'm the Conservation Coordinator for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. We really hope that Los Altos decides to move forward with the dark sky ordinance. I understand that you won't officially be deciding that today, but we hope that we can provide some advice as far as direction to give to staff in moving forward. So I've passed around a handout with some provisions that you could consider in your motion. I'll cover those asks later on if I have the time for it, but just as a quick response to one of the questions that was raised, I just want to point out that one approach that Cupertino took to the question of enforcement is that they enforce their ordinance when neighbors complain. So otherwise, they wouldn't, you know, go around and patrol around for it, but that is a potential trigger for it. I just wanted to throw that onto the table before I begin. If you do decide to proceed with an ordinance, you will be in good company. As we noted in our letter, Sierra Club and Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society, bird safe design and dark sky standards have already been adopted by the city of Cupertino in a joint ordinance and several other jurisdictions are in the process of drafting dark sky policies. Those are Powell Alto, Mountain View, Brisbane and Santa Clara County. Sunnyvale recently included bird safe design and dark sky in their Moffett Park specific plan and their planning commission has a study issue item in 2024 to apply that citywide. So hopefully they move forward with that also. Bird safe design is currently in place in many, in many cities such as San Jose, Sunnyvale, Mountain View, and Powell Alto is also developing an ordinance. So the, Mayor Meadows, you mentioned reach codes and I hope that through this, you know, really sort of collaborative process between different cities, that if enough cities come up with their own bird safe design and dark sky standards, that we can generate that consensus that will ultimately lead to the regional action and beyond that is ultimately necessary to retrieve our night skies back. Regarding dark sky, this is something that is deeply rooted biologically in our evolution. You know, we've evolved, you know, all species on earth over millions of years under natural cycles of day and light. And when that circadian rhythm is disrupted, it can lead to a lot of significant impacts. In many species, it can affect key behaviors such as like foraging, migration as birds are particularly impacted by that. The cumulative skyglow from cities can actually completely distract birds from their migration routes, leading them to die of starvation or get exhausted. And powerful uplighting can actually trap and capture birds in the beams themselves and they can fly around and they get scared and confused and call out to each other, which attracts more birds. So uplighting can be particularly devastating for them. It also has impacts on human beings. The disruption of circadian rhythms in human beings is something that can be pretty damaging to us. And children, it can affect the regulation of our growth hormones and for adults, it can affect our response to cancer. We actually heal better from cancer when we sleep without light disturbance at night. And on the flip side, we have an increased risk of cancer when we are exposed to artificial light at night. I do want to cover really briefly, if I have the time, bird safe design, which I really hope you include in the scope of this discussion. It's a natural pairing to dark sky, there's a lot of co-benefits and a lot of the techniques we do with lighting also benefit birds. But there are things that we can do to mitigate building design for birds as well, particularly in new construction. About 1 billion birds die per year in the United States from building collisions alone. They are tremendously devastating and these deaths are, for the most part, avoidable. Birds just don't know that glass is there. So a key component of bird safe design is the two-by-four rule, which is a two-inch by four-inch gap. If you can put visual indicators on a window, this is often called fritting, but it can be done with all sorts of techniques, the bird will see that a gap is there and it won't try to fit through it. Otherwise, it might see through the glass or it sees a reflection of habitat in the glass and boom, they just run right into it. So there's some pretty straightforward bird safe design techniques out there. The American Bird Conservancy is a great list, they're fairly easy to implement. So we do hope you consider those when looking at new construction in this ordinance. And last- And lastly, I just want to let you all know that the Sierra Club and the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society, we are available to collaborate. We've written a model dark sky ordinance and we have a side-by-side spreadsheet of a bunch of bird safe design standards. We'd be happy to follow up with you, to share resources with staff, and to work together with you on this. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Leeds. Oh, okay, we have a question for you. Don't, don't go away. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you for your comments. I, I'm curious, have any of the other cities that you mentioned at the beginning of your presentation used the Sierra Club's model ordinance and, and design standards?
No, but we actually just finished that model ordinance like two weeks ago. But we did, we did collaborate with the Cupertino city staff in the creation of their combined bird safe design and dark sky ordinance.
Great, thank you very much.
You want, you have a question too? Okay, one more question.
They may not have adopted your ordinance, but I believe they, they did consult you in when they were pursuing this ordinance, correct?
They did, yeah.
You did receive consultation and such as like through Google as well?
Mm-hmm.
So when they did their new development. And thank you for mentioning Brisbane. And that was the city I got wrong. It wasn't San Bruno, it was Brisbane. I got it in my notes, but I said the wrong city. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Dashiel. Jim Fenton, and we'll wrap up in the chambers with Rem Fisher. Mr. Fenton.
Thank you very much. I'm Jim Fenton. When we moved to Los Altos from San Jose in 2004, one of the first things that we noticed was that it actually got dark around here. Los Altos has always prided itself on its rural feel and being able to see the stars is an important part, part of that, excuse me. But even though the agenda is titled Dark Skies Discussion: Limiting the Skyglow by Restricting Upward Lighting is only part of the issue, we also experience glare from things like unshielded streetlights, so-called light trespass from the lighting of areas where it's not intended or needed, and the use of just more lighting than what is really needed. The staff report seems to have missed a number of local jurisdictions with limitations on outdoor lighting. Los Altos Hills, Palo Alto, Sunnyvale, Saratoga, Los Gatos, and as noted Cupertino, all have provisions restricting outdoor lighting in some manner. Portola Valley has a particularly comprehensive set of rules, including a brochure with examples of acceptable and unacceptable light fixtures. Los Altos, on the other hand, has zoning regulations that prohibit unnecessary illumination of adjacent lots and interference with their enjoyment, but these regulations do not exist for areas that are zoned residential, which is the great majority of the city. There was some discussion earlier about safety concerns and, and crime. And although I, I have, I don't have the resources to, to research this thoroughly, what I've seen, it, the research that I have seen indicates that it's, it's inconclusive as to whether increases in lighting actually correspond to a decrease in crime. Remember that the lighting helps the criminal as well as the, as well as the enforcement. Restrictions on outdoor lighting are not uniform from city to city because they generally reflect the character of the city. Los Altos needs to make policy decisions on what's right for us. But our current lack of any regulations at all in much of our city is not consistent with the character that we want Los Altos to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fenton. Mr. Fisher.
My name is Ronnie Fisher.
Oh, it's Ronnie, not Ram, sorry. Ms. Fisher, I'm not doing too well tonight.
It's my handwriting also.
Thank you.
I'm a member of Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society and also a member of their environmental action committee. We have over 100 members here in Los Altos. I got involved with this group because I live in Sunnyvale and I live right where the residential district ends at the train tracks and where the business district begins. And there was a very bright light nearly half a mile away shining in my living room. It was illuminating the Fortinet Building. So after much pleading with the city, which did nothing, I wrote an editorial which ended up in the Merc and then they changed the angle of the light so it wasn't as bad. Then between me and that building, there was a new building constructed, which is still under construction, which has very bright lights, which will be temporary, but they're shining in mine. And if I go out my other door, there are bright lights from the parking lot portals. And if I need to charge my EV, because there's no EV charger where I live, I have to walk 15 minutes. Let's say I need to use the car eight o'clock in the morning, I have to charge, wake up at four and charge it, just walking and seeing all those streetlights, I can't go back to sleep. So artificial light is a major part of my life. And as far as I know, I hope I'm wrong, that anything in Sunnyvale does not affect any of my lighting issues. Like all the new, all the study issues in Sunnyvale will be for future plans. Because I am so sensitive to light at night, I have been advocating for a few years. And I'm glad Cupertino adopted a bird safety and dark sky ordinance and currently Mountain View and Palo Alto and Brisbane are working on them. Supervisor Semidion, just last week, in a motion that received unanimous support from county supervisors, directed county staff to develop bird safety and dark sky regulation. Many cities in our area also have bird safety regulations. I hope Los Altos joins these jurisdictions. Please include outdoor lighting for all private properties, both existing and future, indoor lighting in office or commercial buildings, and please require bird safety for new or remodeled buildings and structures to reduce and retrofit and the architectural elements that pose hazards to birds. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Remarkable timing there. All right, so we're going to go to the online comments.
The first speaker is Canis Lee.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Canis Lee, and I wanted to give my perspective on the night sky and light pollution as a high school student. Because I think a lot of us overlook just how precious the night sky is. To me, the night sky is not just an indicator that the day is ending. It's a beautiful sight that continues to inspire me, keep me curious, and also remind me how short life is, that compared to the stars, we're just a second in a calendar year. And so I'm really grateful for this change in perspective that the night sky offers. But I like to say that my feelings aren't unique. The stars have inspired generations of artists, musicians, scientists, and dreamers. Vincent van Gogh himself once said, "For my part, I know nothing with any certainty but that the sight of the stars makes me dream." So I hope that in the future, generations can continue to marvel at space and find humility in its vastness. But currently, it's becoming apparent our ability to do so is being more and more compromised by the rapid increase in light pollution that we're facing. Light pollution is harming our ability to stargaze, but it's also more serious than that. The circadian rhythms of humans, of birds, and of nocturnal animals are being disrupted. And just from light pollution alone, we're losing $3 billion a year and adding 15 million tons of carbon dioxide to the atmosphere. But the good news is that a lot of this is preventable. It just starts with more conscious and bird-friendly lighting design. I'm determined to keep the magic of the night sky alive, and I hope you'll join me in this journey of fighting light pollution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
The next speaker is Teresa Morris.
Good evening. Yes, my name's Teresa Morris and I'm a commissioner with Park and Rec, but I am not speaking as a commissioner this evening. I am speaking as a resident. I agree with all of the speakers. I'd like to add a couple comments, though. Much light, haha, has been shed on birds and thankfully Dashiel Lee commented regarding impacts to children and, and adults. As a sleep consultant, I can attest to the need for complete darkness for all sleepers. I'd like to encourage the most stringent dark skies ordinance possible. We only have one planet, we must protect it in every way possible. Therefore, why stop at standard development? Maybe have policies and ordinances around public parking, roadways, and other areas that are not being discussed this evening. Why not, please shield all streetlights, direct all light downward, and control the kind of light, the kind of lights that are used, so the Kelvin and the lumens, and the trespass onto private property. For example, an area that could use attention are the super bright lights that are now part of our streetlights. We have them, one directly across from our house, and it is insane how bright that is. I've had to add another layer of curtains to the windows thanks to it being so bright. Also, I'm excited about this topic coming up because I've been going to previous complete street meetings to discuss the wooden bridge when they were talking about the lighting on that and the design of that. And I asked that it have lights that would come on only when people were walking on it. And this is because we have animals on the creek below it and we have insects, and our insects are taking a huge hit right now from the, the overuse of lights. So I'd ask that you look at this, consider every angle that you possibly can of reducing the light pollution in Los Altos. And we've always historically had a city that had lower lights, and that was part of the code. So I would encourage that we look to that history and support it, but also maybe think about having complete streets and also the environmental commission weigh in on this ordinance and give their perspective because they certainly have a way of looking at things that's different than a lot of us do. So thank you for the time and thank you for talking about this.
Thank you, Ms. Morris.
The next speaker is Roberta Phillips.
Hi, good evening. So I was going to cede my time to Dashiel Leeds, but he's already taken his time. If I have somebody else. So I just wanted to say, you know, I, I want to second everything that he said. I hope that you will, you know, use the, the expertise out in our community to help you form an ordinance. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips.
Gary Haddon.
Good evening. This is Gary Haddon, Los Altos resident. Thank you very much for taking up the topic of dark skies. That and I appreciate the rural charm of Los Altos past my wife, and that includes dark skies. We enjoy seeing the stars and planets. The peaceful, quiet tranquility of the darkness is part of that charm. The quiet is broken occasionally by screech owls. We have a pair that... We have a pair that live in, in Hale Creek and visit our property from time to time. We really enjoy hearing them. Whenever we walk the neighborhood at night, we wear light colors, carry a flashlight. There is little traffic in residential areas at night in Los Altos. We feel very safe. When we walk, it always is jarring to come to a house with bright yard lights. Our night vision is quickly lost. We see no good reason for so much light. Drop the lumens, soften the color, aim the lights down, not in our eyes or neighbors' windows, and use a motion sensor. These seem like reasonable measures for all properties. We and the screech owls hope you move in that direction and protect our dark skies. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haddon. Okay, it looks like we're done with public comment. Thank you to everyone who spoke. So we're going to bring it back to council with discussion. Who would like to start? Actually, I, I have a question for Directors Orns first to clarify. Is it correct that we don't have lighting standards in residential, like I guess that was referring to single-family zoning?
We don't have some of the stringent shielding requirements that some other jurisdictions do. So not, I mean, it also depends on where we're looking at it. So there's, there's also just, you know, new development that's occurring in town and inherently with the new development, folks are wanting to uplight or downlight the actual structures themselves as well as the accessory lights that you see in people's yards for evening use and enjoyment of their private property. So we have inherently seen more and more of that come online as more properties are redeveloped and improved.
Thank you, Directors Orns. Okay, so which of my colleagues? Councilmember Daley.
I think we should refer this to the environmental commission and I'm ready to make a motion that we do that.
I'll second that. Um, can we put a little definition around this?
If, if my colleagues are, are supportive of referring this to the environmental commission, then I would make a formal motion identifying the dark sky ordinance and potential, uh, you know, bird harm mitigation, bird safety.
Okay, so you're handing them, your motion, I just want to make sure I understand, because is to hand them the kitten, the whole kitten caboodle and say, clean it, ooh, sorry, clean it up, sort it out, and bring us back some...
Yes, and of course, there's also public, there's also public outreach, right? You know, so all the things that commissions do, they should do.
Well, usually we give them a more defined topic, but we're just going to say, take this and talk about it? Well, wait.
As the second of the motion, I, I appreciate and I'll keep my second to Councilmember Daley's motion where I actually prefer to give them a broad directive, where, you know, we direct them to benchmark other jurisdictions that are comparable to Los Altos, especially in Santa Clara County, and bring back a proposed ordinance with certain elements. And I wouldn't eliminate, for bird safety, light pollution, all these different aspects. I actually would want them to explore that and bring us back something as a proposal.
Okay. And Councilmember Liang. We have a first and a second, so that's on the table. What did you want to...
We're discussing right now.
Well, we're discussing the motion because, yeah.
Because I'm not comfortable with just giving that, that broad direction to them. I think it's important for us to at least provide some direction to staff as well as to the environment commission. Just like when we said to staff, I think it's important that we do our own outreach regarding the housing element, and we start that first. I think it's important that we have our staff do the broad outreach, conduct public outreach and education about this, this item first, possibly even look at Brisbane's survey. And we want to get information back before we just hand it over. We want them to, to as well, have our staff really look at, is there opportunities for us to consult with the Audubon Society and the Sierra Club? And as...
Okay, so you're, you're suggesting a fundamentally, I'm cutting you off just because you're suggesting a fundamentally different thing. So we have a first and a second. And so Vice Mayor.
I, I was not at all expecting this motion, but in, in hearing the discussion right now, I, I think it's a great idea, quite frankly. I, I'm, I want to be supportive of a DSL, I want to be supportive of bird safety. I don't believe that I have the information in front of me right now based upon the staff report and the research that I've been able to do and the public comment to be able to go as far as others on the dais have suggested. So I, 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 I think that, that Councilmember Daley's motion is, is the right way to go.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All right, so we have a motion and a second, so unless you're making a substitute motion, I'm gonna ask the city clerk to, uh, take roll call.
I'd be glad to make a substitute motion. I think we should have our director, um, take the lead on this first, before, um, sending it to the Environmental Commission. I think definitely, as he takes the lead with public outreach and works on, um, putting together a survey, I think it's important that staff lead that survey. I think it's, um, as well, we need, um, to, your guidance as well, because you've heard from the public on the important...
Can we make a point of clarification?
Yeah.
Uh, what is the substitute motion?
Okay. Well, I just wanted to clarify the substitute motion, is that, that, the, the, the Director Zorn's take the lead on this first, um, put together an outreach effort, as well as a survey, as well as, um, look at how you could, look at how we look at the buildings, commercial, residential, as well as, um, um, business districts, and...
Okay, so that, that's the motion, so, uh, Councilmember Flagler, do you have a second for that, or a question?
And then also...
Oh, you're still going with the motion, okay.
Incorporate it with, um, bird safe.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Flagler.
Thank you, Mayor, I am not seconding the motion, and, and, and for me, Mayor, one, I think everything that Councilmember Liang is describing can be done at the commission level, and I think we're all, um, familiar with the fact that Mr. Zorn's has a lot on his plate.
Yes.
Currently with the housing element update, I can speak for him on this, um, and so I think it would really help us move this forward, which is what I think we all want to happen, if we get the Environmental Commission to take lead on this.
Okay, so is there a second for the substitute motion?
Well, just to clarify, then it maybe shouldn't be Director Zorn's, it should be the director who's in charge of the Environmental Commission, it should be, um...
That would be Director Zorn's, isn't it? That's Director Zorn's, so...
Isn't it, Ms. Ferman?
Okay, so is there a second for the substitute motion? If not, we're going to have the clerk take, uh, roll call on the first motion. Substitute motion fails, I believe, so let's take the roll call.
Could you please clarify the motion?
Yes, uh, city clerk.
For the motion to direct the Environmental Commission to research and draft a dark skies ordinance.
Potentially?
Uh, potentially.
Potentially including, uh, bird safety.
Potentially including bird safety.
Yeah, I'd like to amend the motion.
Okay, so now you're proposing a friendly amendment? What's the friendly amendment?
Um, I think outreach is, has been left out of there, so when you read that, you said to, to draft, and in order to draft something, I think it's important we conduct outreach.
But the kitten caboodle is always...
I'm gonna decline that friendly amendment, can we call the question, please?
Yes, let's call the question, because the kitten caboodle does include outreach, it always does, it's defined, go ahead, call the, sorry.
Councilmember, Councilmember Daley?
Yes.
Councilmember Flagler?
Yes.
Councilmember Liang?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Weinberg?
Yes.
Mayor Meadows?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, so with that, we've actually gone through our discussion items, and, uh, we don't need to discuss the informational items. Um, we're gonna go on to council and staff reports and directions on future items, but, uh, let's, um, and then we're gonna adjourn to closed session. Before we adjourn to closed session, the, I can't remember whether it's the city attorney or the city manager is going to, um, give some explanation, we, because we're doing it at the end of a meeting this time, so we'll explain when we're port, reporting back and stuff, but right now, we're going to do, no, there's no...
I know, but they don't have...
Okay, yeah, so if you have your hand up online, there is no, um, we've actually finished all the public comments part, um, so, what, city attorney?
Oh, and we get that public comment on the closed session? We haven't done that yet.
Well, we haven't done that, but we're going, we would, all right, so let me, let me walk through what we're gonna do, we have just a few, uh, reports and directions on future agenda items, if there are any, um, and then we're going to be adjourning to the closed session special meeting, and so if your hand is up to do that, when, after we get back from, um, a brief break before we start closed session, you will have an opportunity, um, to speak for closed session only on the item listed on the closed session agenda, and you will only have two minutes. We actually don't usually take, uh, comment virtually for closed session, but if your hand is still up after all that, um, we will consider taking your comment. All right, so council, uh, reports and directions on future agenda items, colleagues? Okay, Vice Mayor.
Um, I met, uh, at, at the direction of the council, I met with Planet Commissioner Kate Disney, so that meeting took place, I just wanted to report back on that. Over the weekend, I attended the city's Halloween movie night at Grant Park, it was a big success, I believe it was cosponsored by Friends of the Library.
What movie?
Uh, it was Hotel Transylvania, which I and my kids had never seen before, uh, the first one. Um, it was, uh, seemed to be very well-attended, I think there were at least about seventy-five people or so, that was a report back we got, uh, it was a very fun, it was very nice and a fun event, and I think also this week, I think on Saturday, at either nine or ten in the morning, is the city's next family fun day, um, I'm sure that it's going to be Halloween-oriented, so bring your family, especially your little children, to the community center, um, and again, I think it starts at about nine or ten o'clock, it was a lot of fun.
And, uh, no future agenda items?
Um, I think that the council should agendaize discussing whether the city of Los Altos should issue a resolution condemning the Hamas attacks in Israel.
I will, I will second that request.
Okay, so with two, if there's not a third, oh...
I'll support that.
So, okay, so then we're discussing, the future agenda item is to discuss whether to do that, okay, all right, so...
And Mayor, if I could expand on, on that request, um, because I don't want to make the agenda item so narrow, it would be resolution or any other action. Just in case we don't have, if we could do something else.
Okay, uh, Vice Mayor, are you?
Yeah.
Okay. And the third, okay, so that's a future agenda item, any, uh, so who would like to go next? Report out or future agenda item? No, no. Uh, Councilmember Liang?
Um, so, I attended the movie night at Grant Park as well, um, I attended the, um, luau for Lahaina, and I really want to extend a thank you to the city manager and staff for the support we provided for the fundraising effort for Lahaina, so thank you so much for that. And I attended the mid-autumn, and so did the mayor, fest, festival event, it was a big success, it went off really well, the performances were great, and even at the luau for Lahaina, I can't say enough about the performance there as well. And so, um, we're doing some wonderful things with our, um, Parks Arts and Culture Commission, so thank you. And future agenda item, so I do agree with the change that we moved the consent calendar, I mean, the, the special items before the public comments, I was wondering if, or do we discuss...
And we're gonna, can we just touch on that in our, uh, we'll touch on that later.
Oh, okay, I don't know if it's, was something that we needed to agendaize.
Yeah, I, I, we'll, we'll touch on that, yes. If we do it as a permanent thing, then we will, we will announce that, but we're gonna touch on that.
What do you mean by, we're gonna touch on that?
We're gonna talk about that this evening.
Oh, we are? Okay. Well, I guess you guys have information that I don't have.
No, well, I'm the mayor.
Yeah, but normally, we discuss stuff. So that's why I thought it's a future agenda item.
It's, it's a reasonable thing to bring up, and, and you will have, will, will all have an answer, so, um, thank you for that. Um, Councilmember Flagler?
Thank you, just want to announce, but I actually thought Councilmember, Councilmember Liang was going to announce that we went to our two-by-two-by-two.
Oh, I forgot.
Uh, you wanna take it? You, go ahead.
No, go ahead and take it, because I'll just add to it.
Okay, so we, um, attended what most likely will be our last two-by-two-by-two for this calendar year with Fremont Union and Cupertino, um, school district, uh, last week. Um, one of the things, um, I want to share with my colleagues and the public is, um, the announcement that Fremont Union High School District will be moving to district elections in 2024, and they're hoping to get representatives, they don't have, um, a specific composition that they're going to mandate, but they would like to have representation from different groups in the community, and they mentioned they would like to have someone from our city council, um, on this, uh, committee that will explore the districts and what the map looks like, and the outreach, and the whole process. Um, obviously, we're not required to be on this committee, it's an invitation, and I don't know, I, I would look to the city attorney to let us know if this is something we would have to agendaize and select someone, since they, they're asking for someone from the city council, um, or if one of us wants to do it, he or she could voluntarily do it.
Are you informing us, or looking for...
So I'm informing you, but I don't know if we need a future agenda item, and I see...
Uh, we should do, yes.
Yeah, I think it would be better to have it as a future agenda item, so...
Councilmember Liang?
Well, the applications have to be in by the thirtieth of this month, and I don't think we'll be meeting before then, and also, they are looking for, um...
Where are we meeting?
Before then, October thirtieth, we're not gonna meet before October thirtieth, are we?
It's different, though, for the city representative, but go ahead, go ahead.
So because of that, um, I was gonna ask if I could have a letter, because I would like to step up and, and be that representative, because you have to, one of the requirements is that you have to reside in the district.
Not to be on the committee?
Um, I thought that was on the list that they provided.
So maybe we need more clarity?
Yeah, I, it sounds like we don't have enough clarity to, if there's, if you're not quite sure that you heard the same thing, so...
I heard that they would, was, hoping to have a council representative.
Yes.
And we both heard that.
Yes.
Yeah, but you haven't heard whether we're all eligible or only the people who live in the district, so...
I think they had, like, the C-TED, we're talking about the C-TED committee.
We don't, we can't discuss it right now, so, um, okay, so put it as a future agenda item, and/or you can, yeah, I think that's probably the best thing.
And if possible, Mayor, if you and the city manager could consider putting it on, it should be quick.
Yes.
But, um, on the next agenda, I do think there's some urgency, but I don't think October thirtieth is the deadline.
Well, maybe if you follow up and send the city manager the clarification, it can be on, you know, a consent or something like that, okay?
But if it's a deadline that comes before the council meeting, the next council meeting, can we call it, do we call it a special meeting?
So, so you guys will find, we're not, no, we're, you guys will find out the clarification, and then we'll, we'll deal with it at that point, so I don't, I want to make sure we don't go down into the, um, item itself, so, um...
No, but I, I, the item was to address it, so I think that the discussion of how we address it, if we are limited on time and need to address it sooner...
Right, but you're gonna get that information in the clarification, and...
Almost positive, we're not limited on time, that, it, there's, there's no application for the city seat.
Okay.
Due to the...
Well, because then the C-TED was supposed to begin...
Okay, so we've got direction, we're, you're gonna provide clarification to the city manager for the next agenda, and if you learn otherwise, you will let us know, and we'll, uh, we'll take different action. All right, so, um, I will do, am I the last one left? I think I am. Um, so I attended the, the same very fine items, uh, events, I should say, not items, the events, um, hopefully, nobody videoed me trying to learn to do the hula, and I did enjoy awakening the dragon for the lion dance, and there were some amazing performances at both those events, so they were, they were really, uh, fun and worthwhile to be at, and I don't have any, uh, future agenda items, so, um, before then, we're going to adjourn to closed session, and did, um, is there any clarification, or we're just gonna adjourn and take a ten-minute break and come back? But again, the chamber, after public comment, in the chambers, we clear the chambers, closed session is just, uh, council, so we're basically done, and, you know, you're welcome to stay and be here when we get back from our break, or not, so...
Yes, Mayor, that's the clarification, we'll say it again when we come back from recess.
Okay, all right, so with that, uh, we're going to adjourn to closed session special meeting and take a ten-minute break before we come back for that. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we are back from break, and city manager, I will turn it over to you to open the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. So as noted on the agenda, this closed session is held in-person only, so prior to adjourning to closed session, you'll need to ask for public comment for people in chambers.
Okay, so, and yes, I apologize for misspeaking earlier. We do only do comments in chambers, because this is not a virtual meeting. So I don't have any speaker cards. I do not see any public comments in the chambers. So with that, we will go ahead and cut off Zoom and adjourn to our discussion, I mean, not adjourn to it, move forward to it, yes, thank you. And we're going to pause while we reconfigure.